And she's like, well, you know, I've been in.
We're still waiting on a few people in the room, but can I please confirm you can hear us online?
Yes, I can.
Great, thank you so much.
Yes, I can too. Macy, we can't see you though.
We are working on that now.
Got it. Ah, now we can.
Can you see us?
Yes, yes. Not you though.
Thanks for your help.
Hey, everyone. Thanks for joining us. I can't hear me. Can you hear this? Oh, yeah. Welcome to the March 18th, 2025 open meeting. Thanks for your patience. We had an executive session earlier and no actions were taken and ready to get started. Our open meeting at 7:08. We already took all trust, well, all trustees are here except trustee Maris and trustee Miller. So five of us are here today. Folks who are not in the room. And with that, we can go into consent agenda. You have any questions or comments? I think they go to John.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Got a motion in a second.
Mayor Protam Sterling?
Yes.
Trustee Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Billy?
Yes.
Trustee Ty?
Yes.
Trustee Corvalon?
Yes.
And that's it for tonight. Thank you. Motion's approved.
Thank you. With that, with that, we will go into our, I don't have that thing open in front of me, but our staff reports. Is that what comes up?
Yes.
Mayor and trustees, you have our staff reports. If you have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer. One thing I'd like is Andrew also has something he'd like to talk to you about in regard to the pre-treatment ordinance that was under consideration last year. There's been some work done in that space.
Cool. Couple of questions. The wildfire mitigation team, I'm super stoked about that. Any ideas on in terms of like their initial scope of work and whatnot?
Yeah, I'm actually really excited about that too. So what we've got is Josh, Nikki, myself, and Andrew. And a big part of it is going to be town-owned properties. So we want to make sure Andrew's got some work around the water treatment facility, for instance, that needs to be done. And then we've got all our kind of park space, which, you know, is an ongoing project. And then just kind of the stuff we have around town. Wingate property is one example of a property that we need to look at. In terms of the larger scale of this, we did talk to Ned Fire about this as well and talking about how we can align our training to their training. We've had a lot of volunteer efforts in the past for fire mitigation and it's proving problematic from a insurance perspective because there's volunteers and you're working with things that could fall on people's heads and that could cause fires and like heavy equipment. And so what we're trying to do is figure out a way to kind of replicate what was happening with saws and slaws. And that's been part of the challenge of this. But what we're going to do is train all staff so we're cross-trained to the Ned Fire kind of standard. And then we can use their sawyers through this work. We've also been working with the watershed collective about like maybe some potential there to work with them. And then also with EFA and also Coal Creek Cares to restart this program that they have to get people wood that need it, which is good for us because we get rid of the wood and then they can do it. Teens Inc. has also been involved a little bit. They cannot run chainsaws, but they can swamp wood out and all that kind of thing. So I think what we're trying to do is come up with like what I have been thinking of as like a level of service document that would talk about how we're mitigating town properties, but also kind of like some of these like regional collaboratives that we could have to really address these efforts more holistically.
Awesome.
One last thing, I'm sorry, I went a little fast there, but there has been a group working in town last year to help folks who can't afford to have their properties mitigated. They're going to be back this year and they'd like to be working with people. And last year, I think they specifically worked in Old Town. They're looking to see if they can expand their scope a little bit, but I think at least in Old Town, this program will be continuing this year.
Yeah, I've talked, I met with a couple of them and it's going to be Old Town and possibly Big Springs, actually.
Yeah, that's great. There's properties up there for sure. Okay. And then regarding tips and safer main streets, I know there was a little line in there, but it's, any update?
Sure. So both of them required, they're both federal grants. And I think that those are tricky to manage, but essentially what happened was is JVA needed another consultant to follow the uniform actuals of the federal government, which basically dictate how we're allowed to negotiate with property owners. And because these projects both require temporary easements, we had to hire an outside contractor to do that work to consult, to be certified to work with that process. That work is happening right now and we should be very close to having, oh, why, maybe not very, well, pretty close to having it completed. The goal would be to bid them out this spring if we can, which is still in compliance with the effort. And we've talked to CDOT about both projects and understand some of the challenges that have happened with them related to Excel previously and all that kind of thing. And they told us that we can get an extension for them if needed, but the goal would be to try to have them bid out this spring. And as long as we can do that, we're probably in good shape. I do think that we can be under construction this summer and hopefully largely completed. Tips is a little more complicated than SMS, so I think SMS is, should be relatively easy. I was hoping that we could bid them out together in one package so we could save on mobilization costs, but we can't because of the way they're, they're written on the federal side. But there is a possibility that, that there could be some efficiencies there if somebody were to bid on both projects. But the important thing is, is that we're, we're moving along.
Okay, very cool. Shout out to Rita and her whole diligence, the whole report. So excited to still see, you know, with the 2.5 million NC safe and generating $141,075 just this year.
That was a great decision. I'm glad that that happened.
It had a little bit of opposition and I'm glad we pushed through with it. So, so, and thank you Rita for those reports. They're really easy to follow. Question, Macy, when you were doing your STR, that whole like core request, is that easy for you?
The person who requested like all the information regarding short-term rentals, we do have a tracker, which was ultimately provided. He asked for all that information and then asked if there was an all-encompassing document to just redact from there. So that's how that was fulfilled.
Okay, so that was something that you already had access, or you had already built. So, okay, fabulous. Awesome. I just wanted to do another shout out to the police for continuing to be a presence seeing that 94 mile per hour report coming out of the canyon. That's why we went. Question about that extra duty. That was one of the things that we ramped up as part of this new budget. Thoughts on that? Where is that landing? Are we, yeah?
So far, successful.
Okay.
I would say that we are working on our efficiency in that process of like how we enter citations and how that all happens with the CSO. But we've seen a significant uptick this year. You may have seen, I mean, they've been pretty active coming out of the canyon. I think we're seeing speeds in excess of 10 miles an hour is really what, what the challenge is. And so that's what they've been focusing on mostly is like the really dangerous speeds there. I think that the shifts are effective. We've also been talking to them about things like making a little bit more of a presence at the elementary school just during pickup and drop-off times. And then they've been able to use those shifts to help us with some other things around town as they occur.
And we're getting coverage for traffic site for the court?
Yes, right now we are. And I think what we're doing, Rita's managing those shifts to just like what our budget is. So she's keeping in mind that we need those monthly court dates covered all the time. So we have that budget solid. And then the rest of it, we're just trying to, you know, parse it out over the, over the year.
Okay, cool. And then shout out to Kurt. Thanks for him doing some extra coverage at the community center. And that was all my stuff. Thanks, guys. Reports look good.
I do want to say I've been driving up and down 119 right there, a lot. And I've been seeing them just doing work, pulling people over who are speeding, for sure.
I think they listened to us, which has been great. And they've actually been, you know, in my staff report, you see Sheriff Johnson was here last week on Monday and we had a meeting with residents and it went really well. And they're being very responsive to our needs. We've also had a really good couple of meetings with Office of Disaster Management about our emergency planning, which those efforts are going to evolve to in the near future. But they have been very supportive of us and I think their understanding of where we are. We have received a preliminary estimate of cost for next year. The increase is not as much as, as we were afraid of, but I think we're probably a little early to talk about it yet. But I'd like to bring that back to the board for a discussion item soon.
Cool.
And then the only other thing, just to make sure there's time for Andrew, just to tell you a little about the pre-treatment.
Let's talk pre-treatment.
Okay, I'll be super, super quick. Just wanted to tee up our industrial pre-treatment policy because we spoke to you, I think in July of last year. And it's been a long, long time and I apologize for that. But we received feedback during that meeting and with follow-up conversations with business owners. Some of that feedback was that the policy was very long and complex. Feedback that the definition of who an industrial user and who the ordinance would apply to was vague. And feedback that concern over the policy applying to very small businesses that may not have a very large impact. So we are preparing a simplified ordinance that will be coming back to you at your next meeting. And just very simply, that, that ordinance will include a very simple requirement that food and service establishments need to have a grease trap or grease interceptor. That's not a major change, but it used to be lumped in with the industrial user section. So many restaurants thought those industrial user requirements might apply to them. So we separated that, made it clear to everyone that food services establishments requirements are just the grease trap. And then a clear definition of who industrial user is, which is, we're prepared, we're going to propose that someone that uses a lot of water, so about 2,000 gallons a day on a monthly average. Someone that is a categorical industrial user, which is defined by the EPA. Think those like a metal chroming factory, which we don't have any of those. Or someone that we determine is having a major impact on our treatment plant. And, and really, right now, our thinking is that we don't have any industrial users, but it provides us a framework should we find any serious issues at our treatment plant or in the sewer system. It gives us a framework to work with someone to come into compliance with, with what we need. So just one, I know it's been a while, so we just wanted to mention it to you to just get your gears moving on it because I know it's been a while, but it's going to be a very simplified ordinance coming to you at the next meeting.
And so even, because there was conversation at the last time we talked about it, July, really? Feels like yesterday. Breweries?
Right, yes. So they would not be considered an industrial, right, I looked at water usage and no one's really hitting that 2,000 gallons per day.
Okay.
It would be if we are cleaning the sewer system and we just find a ton of solids or a ton of issues downstream of a brewery.
That you know is from them.
Yeah, and, and this would give us, you know, a bit of a carrot and stick approach. We, we don't want to regulate. It would be more like we'll work with the business owner, but if someone continues having issues where that's, that's affecting our community's investment with the sewer system and the treatment plant, that, then we have a framework to work, to kind of require them to do things.
Got it. Cool.
Thank you.
Questions for Andrew? More questions for Andrew? Tanya, you have any questions?
No, I appreciate the diligence and working with all the business owners because we don't want to stress them out any more than they need to be over it. Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, thanks for the feedback and for your patience.
Thanks for being here. Any other questions to any of the other staff or to Jonathan's staff reports? Hearing none, we'll bring it to ourselves for BOT reports. I am, the Peak to Peak Health and Human Services Alliance meeting has gone to an every other month meeting, so there was no March meeting. There will be on April 10th. And then I did attend a meeting last week with Boulder County on homelessness. And so people from different municipalities in the county. And just some of the concrete things that are happening to up, well, to improve housing opportunities, let's just say it that way. And actually, John, I have a question for you. Great, thanks. Because at the meeting, I, they had a curious slide and I didn't understand it. And something passed on the state level about ADUs. And that all the towns and cities in the county are, you know, make, are not eligible, but like fall under it. And we are somehow an exception, accepted to it. Do you know about that? I don't. I didn't. I was curious. We are an unincorporated Boulder, are accept, you know, accepted or, you know, not held to this law.
Do the ADUs is used by right in every zone district thing or?
I was a little unclear when you put it out there. It was passed in, as a state, at the state level. And so the county's, you know, making it happen. But we, we are the outlier there. I was just curious. And if you know, I'm not going to, I meant to talk to you about this before.
So can I just, I think I have a response to it. It is municipalities, it applies to municipalities with 1,000 residents that are in a metropolitan planning organization. And Netherland doesn't meet that second requirement of being in a metropolitan planning organization.
Because we're non-MPO.
Yeah.
Dr. Cog is like two parts. There's the MPO, which is the metropolitan area, and then the non-MPO. That's, that's where it comes from.
Okay, I did not know that. That's, that's interesting. Thanks. Okay, cool. So that was just something I learned and and that was kind of all my work with committees. You know, we've definitely met with the county and the city around across mine, so we'll talk more about that here later today too. Other than that, get through the school year. Go ahead, Nicole.
Sure. So Planning Commission, we formally adopted or had put to the comprehensive plan, created the final version, which we then all adopted. So that's what's been moving and shaking on the Planning Commission. Next up is the sub-area plan. So I think that's the topic for the next meeting and we're going to dive into that. And then you'll probably be seeing that again, or us as this board will be seeing it again. Dr. Cog, we meet tomorrow night, so we'll have, I'll have an update for the next meeting on all the things happening within Dr. Cog.
Thanks, Nicole.
I have nothing to report. I was unable to make a staff meeting and unable to make the youth council. But I did talk to Max and try to get an update from him on what was discussed. And he told me that it was really just a short meeting to make sure that we're all on the same page.
I did actually had a youth advisory board meeting. My weeks are blurring together. I'm not quite sure when that was. It was recently. But it, they had lots of questions about, you know, things around affordable housing, Eldora, that kind of thing. And so it was a good, just 45 minutes of me answering their questions. So it was fun.
Awesome. Thanks for doing that.
They are going to present to us, I think on April 18th, the letter they're putting together.
BZA has not met. Consortium has not met. Nothing to report.
Damn that BZA. Tanya?
Is it because they haven't had anything to review? Got it. Okay, that's why.
Good. That one meets only when, when needed. There's no.
Like once a quarter, if necessary.
If necessary.
Once a, once a year required to pick officers.
Yeah.
It could happen in the next few months potentially, but I don't know.
For me, you're basically going to see everything we talked about coming up later tonight. Who we pick to be on the board, the bylaws, all that stuff. So that will be coming up tonight.
Thanks, Tanya.
Yeah, I did meet with Kate, the DDA, Executive Director of DDA. So we had a good talk right before we were meeting last week. We've been meeting with Andrew too, so we're really just working hard to bring better collaboration between the DDA and BOT. And I think tonight will be some good, great conversation around that. Oh, yeah. The other thing that's come up that not really board-related, but just Tanya brought it up and that many have, you know, change of, for those of you with kids, you might be aware, there's a change with principals. We're going to have one principal next year for two schools, two assistant principals. I've talked some to Caleb. But hope to talk to all the local principals, Gavin Outgoing and Caleb and Stephen LaFavor for his input. And then intend to go speak at the board of, you know, the BVSD's board meeting on April 8th. Anything else? If, if not, I'd like to just give Jim Navratil, he's here and he's not, he's hoping not to wait till the end of the meeting to give him a moment to give a public comment on non-agenda item.
Thank you for letting me make a few comments. I'm not sure what your plans are for the annex over here. I'm not sure what that's called, but the old schoolhouse. But personally, I'd like to see each classroom made into apartments for seniors. And in particular, I would like to see some type of program to assist, for assisted seniors. I have several friends that have moved down below because they, there was no facilities up here for them. So they, one's moved to Longmont, one moved to Lafayette. And they're very pricey down there for the assisted living. But with the kitchen here, with all the activities in the building, the movies once a week, it just would be an ideal place for seniors to live. And it would bring income in to the town, I'm sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's the first, I've heard that idea. It's a great one.
Well, John, can you just give a little bit of a report as to that part of the community center?
Sure. So in your budget for this year, you approved $7,500 for a structural assessment of that facility. This building, while is not designated historic, is historic and likely would be designated as such if we had that process in place. What I would like to do, and I've been talking to Don about this, is to find a structural assessment company that has background in historic facilities to see what, what the status of that wing is. We have gotten some very off, you know, just kind of off-the-cuff estimates to rebuild a structure here that could exceed $1,000 a square foot. So if it were possible to restore that part of the building into a use for the community, it would be good. We can do some other things around that too, like regrade the road and some of these other things we're talking about. But the first step is we need to understand what is required to fix it. If it's a structural issue, we probably, it's probably not worth it. But if it's something like just asbestos abatement and a new electrical and egress paths, it may be. like just asbestos abatement and a new electrical and egress paths, it may be worth our time. What I'd like to do is complete that and then bring that to a discussion item for you. There's a number of uses that could happen there. We're also going to need to be thinking about our civic uses soon. Town Hall is going to need to be looked at and some restoration happening there as well. So it may be useful for us to have space like that and as Jim noted, senior housing is a very critical need in our community. One other thing I want to note, just relevant, is that Britt and I have had some initial conversations with BCHA about doing a project here. They're very interested in expanding our senior housing as well, as well as our other affordable housing options across the whole spectrum of housing affordability. And so those are something that we're actively pursuing and likely are things that we'd want to bring back for discussion with the board in the very near future. But I think my really positive takeaway is I think there's a fighting chance that we're going to hit those Prop 1, 2, 3 requirements this year. So, for a while, it was looking a little bit not questionable, but we just weren't sure how that was going to happen and I think we're starting to see a path come forward. So Jim, I'd love to talk to you more about what we're thinking about if you had a moment later.
And so just from a timeline perspective for folks who are listening and that, you know, we have to go through that structural assessment and everything. I mean, that process takes a few months before we would even understand what we could do with that.
I'm hoping that we can get it done pretty quickly. It probably is at least a week of looking at things because I got to go through all the brick and then, but really, that's the piece that's really important is the brick and the roof. So, we just got to get on somebody's schedule and I really want to get somebody who has some historic building background because it's, you know, there's, there's a lot of value in saving historic buildings if you can, but it is a specialized skill set.
John, I have a question. This is Tanya. Why were you getting quoted 1,000 square feet? Is that remodeling it or would that be if we tore it down and rebuilt?
Rebuild. And that's just kind of looking at the marketplace right now. It could be off. It really depends on.
Does that market value right now for building?
It could be. We haven't bid it out and I think we'd need to know a little bit more about what the overall scope of it would be, but my concern is, is that we're building a very specialized structure and that, I want to, I just want to make sure that we get the most bang for our buck and preserve like the community uses that are important here. So, we need to do that research and I think this is the first step, understanding if that building could be saved and then we can look at what expansion might be required and like what that could look like as well. One thing that would be nice if we did save it, we could look at whether we could get historic preservation grants to do some of this work and that could offset our costs significantly. But, you know, there's a lot of, there's a lot of different pieces. If it had a housing component, we could use housing dollars and I think that that's really what we need to know is should that building be saved and if it should, what could be the uses in there? There's also a room that could be a very good Board of Trustees room that could just be used for this purpose and set up all the time, which would save staff a lot of time and free up this space significantly. So I think that that's what the process needs to look like.
Gotcha.
See if it can be saved and then maybe we have some engagement.
So, the people who are going to come in and investigate it, they're also going to be looking for the environmental concerns that I was told are prevalent in that West Wing.
Right.
Not just structural, but also the radon, the asbestos, whatever.
Right. Well, and those costs are going to be similar either way and maybe cheaper if you save the building because you have to mitigate the asbestos no matter what. And Colorado law, rightly so, is a little restrictive in how that happens, but you can encapsulate asbestos as well. That's a mitigation strategy. And so what we need to look at is what, what could actually happen and just kind of have some data to work with. But I am, Dawn is working on getting quotes right now to get that work done and hopefully we can get something to you before summer so that this conversation can happen in relatively short order.
Great, thank you.
So stick around, Jim. There's still lots of conversations that we had on it.
Guess we'll just go ahead and open up if there's any public comments on non-agenda items. We won't have that probably at the end now, so public comments on non-agenda items. Hearing and seeing none, we'll go ahead and bring it back to our agenda. We'll go into action items. Thanks, Jim. The first action item is the administrative approval of a new liquor license. It would be, Macy?
Yeah. So, this evening, we will be considering the adoption of Ordinance 874, which allows administrative approval for new liquor license. And this is any standard liquor license that would be applied for, for a new restaurant, a new liquor store, or a gas station that holds a fermented malt beverage license, any type of liquor license like that. Right now, we do have administrative approval for special event liquor license, so it would be giving administrative approval to these new liquor licenses as well. So right now, there's a very extensive and standardized process for application for a new liquor license and it's done collaboratively with the state. So the, the process is mostly outlined by them and enacted by me. So I provide them with all materials and evidence found with, through the investigation or the application process. And if you remember, we just had a hearing for a new liquor license in February and I presented you with all of the information that was collected through the application process. And then the hearing is a formal process that's currently in our code, which is, has been a standard process to have locally occur, but recently the state has amended this and removed that requirement for the local authority. So my question before you this evening is, are you interested in removing the hearing process part of the application for a new liquor license and still requiring that administrative application process? And it would ultimately be applied for with me, I collect everything and sign off, approve locally, and then the state reviews all of those documents and subsequently issues.
So any, first of all, any clarifying question? Or go ahead. Clarifying.
I move to approve ordinance.
Oh, it's an action item. Okay.
Just joking.
I wasn't expecting that. I just figured.
Same online.
I see what I can get away with. No clarifying questions on my behalf.
Done here.
Tanya, any clarifying questions before we go to public comment?
No.
Okay. That will open up for public comment on the, on Ordinance 874, administrative approval of new liquor licenses. Any public comment on this in the room? If not, we'll go to folks online. Any public comment from folks online? Just start talking or raise your hand if you like. Hearing, hearing no comments, I'll bring it back to the board for extensive discussion and then a motion.
I move to approve Ordinance 874. An ordinance of the Board of Trustees of the Town of Nederland, Colorado, amending Article 2 of Chapter 6 related to alcoholic beverages to allow administrative approval of new liquor licenses.
I second.
So, yeah, I mean, we, I went through this process. I led it, you know, and it became very clear to me, like, wow, this could definitely be handled administratively. And so not much discussion on my behalf, just because it just, where we can build efficiencies into our operations, it makes sense. So.
And to support the applicant as well, because it could be, you know, waiting for the first or third Tuesday could put a wrench in their timeline.
Sure. Yeah. No, that's a great point. And I, yeah, I don't know, there's something I like about having that be done administratively. I mean, people were being asked to speak on behalf of the person's character, you know, and it's sort of like, I get it, but it's kind of, it kind of feels outdated.
I agree. And it's a massive, massive time saver for everyone involved.
Rashawn won't have to call in from Nepal next time.
Yeah.
Well, with that, you want to take a vote? Any more comments or discussion? Kate, Macy?
Trustee Ty?
Yes.
Trustee Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Billy?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Sterling?
Yes.
And trustee Corvalon?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion has been approved.
Thanks, everyone. Appreciate that. With that, we'll move to our second action item of the evening, appointment to the Sustainability Advisory Board. And Cass?
Yeah. So for the Sustainability Advisory Board, we had one opening because a member had resigned and her term was set to end in June 2027. As you might remember, we recently appointed Erica Thorley to the alternate position and this member that resigned, resigned after Erica was already appointed. So there was only an alternate position open when Erica applied. We, so the SAB met about this because they received, or we received two applications for the vacant board position. One was from Erica Thorley and one was from Tim Wilmouth and.
Tom.
Tom. Sorry. Tom Wilmouth.
Sorry.
My bad.
No worries.
Yes, from Tom Wilmouth and the SAB unanimously voted to recommend that Erica be placed in the vacant position, the regular board position with a term to end June 2027, in that Tom Wilmouth be placed in the alternate position. And this recommendation was really because Erica has had a longer history with Nederland and the SAB, as well as being, you know, in my position previously and her extensive knowledge warrants that. So, yeah, the questions before the board tonight would be, does the BOT approve appointing Erica Thorley to a SAB member position with a term ending in June 2027? And does the BOT approve appointing Tom Wilmouth to the SAB alternate position with a term ending June 2025?
Yes.
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 I predict extensive discussion here. Erica also does this for a living for the city of Erie. She's there as sustainability coordinator. Might be slightly different talent.
Yeah. I mean, this is rightly so. Mayor Billy won't require a lot of discussion. We're very familiar with Erica and we, I personally support that decision as well. That makes a lot of sense. And it looks like we'll be seeing some other appointment for the alternate position again here shortly anyway, coming up in June 2025.
Yes, we will be.
Okay.
So would be, so would we be, I mean, I read, you know, two potential appointments here, but he, you know, this other, Tom would be basically moving to the alternate spot. Is that, are we able to approve both of those right now? Or today?
Yeah. Can we make motions?
Oh, yeah, we know, yeah, we got to do public comment. I'm just, that's my clarifying question.
Yeah, we'll make two motions separately for, for each one. No problem.
Thank you. Any more clarifying questions from the board? Tanya?
No, I don't have any clarifying questions.
Okay. Thank you. That will go to the public comment. Is there anyone in the room who has public comment on the two applicants for the vacancies with the SAB Sustainability Advisory Board? Folks online, if anyone has a comment on these appointments? Hearing and seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board for discussion and a motion.
All right, so I'm going to make two motions. First one, ready?
Yep.
I move to appoint Erica Thorley to a SAB member position with a term ending in June 2027.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, Macy?
Trustee Larson?
Yes.
Trustee Ty?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Sterling?
Yes.
Trustee Corvalon?
Yes.
And Mayor Billy?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion is unanimously approved.
I move to approve appointing Tom Wilmouth to the SAB alternate position with a term ending in June 2025.
Second.
Go ahead, Macy.
Okay. Trustee Ty?
Yes.
Trustee Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Billy?
Yes.
Trustee Corvalon?
Yes.
And Mayor Protem Sterling?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion's approved.
Thanks, everyone. Appreciate it. With that, we will go to our third action item of the evening, which is the appointment to the Nederland Downtown Development Authority. Kate?
Hi. Good evening. In January 2025, Barb Hart resigned from her position and applications were posted and accepted through March 3, 25. Town received four applications for the one vacancy. They were Rod Mitchell, Jason Suss, Kyle Bucy, and John Thompson. Rod Mitchell and Jason Suss have withdrawn their applications. Kyle Bucy was unanimously approved for recommendation to the Board of Trustees by the DDA Board at their meeting, 3/12/25. We have in the aim here that due to the potential for another board vacancy before May board recruitment, that the DDA is also recommending John Thompson to the Board of Trustees should a vacancy arise. And we just got confirmation this evening that that vacancy has been confirmed. And so this evening, we would like to amend the request and ask that you appoint both applicants to the DDA Board.
Who is the one who resigned?
It's Nathan Smallwood. So, my, so my questions are, you know, do you wish to appoint Kyle Bucy and John Thompson to the DDA Board? Kyle Bucy's term would end in June 2027 and John Thompson's would be June 2028.
Thank you. Well, I see both those gentlemen are in the audience and I'd like to give them an opportunity to talk if you'd like to have anything you want to say with us, to us. Now is your time.
You have to come up to the mic.
So, we want to record it to folks online and folks in posterity can hear it.
Kyle Bucy, just looking forward to helping how we can.
Thanks, Kyle.
Thank you, Kyle.
Any questions for Kyle? Tanya, any questions for Kyle Bucy?
No, just thanks for, for volunteering to serve on the board.
My pleasure.
Thanks, Kyle.
Thanks, guys.
Appreciate it. John, you want to come up?
Actually, wrote something down, but now I don't really need to say it because.
You might as well.
We always love to hear you.
We want to hear.
It's basically just like that I've been here for 10 years, working at the store and listening to everybody and everything that goes on business-wise and I'd be a good resource, so I hope I can help.
Thank you.
Agreed.
Questions for, questions for John? We think you can help. Questions for John? Tanya, any questions for John Thompson?
No, I'm, I'm good. Thanks again for serving.
Thanks, John. Thanks, Kyle.
Put this on file somewhere.
Cool.
Save it for when you decide to run for trustee.
Exactly.
Hang it in your store.
Yeah, frame it.
Thank you both. With that, any, any questions before we go to public comment? Comments?
Yeah, just, I'll just make a comment to both the applicants. Thank you for putting your hands up to serve. Town government is not easy. You kind of have to be willing to have a thick skin and you have to have patience. You have to have a lot of patience to understand it doesn't work like a business. And so just stay in it, ask a lot of good questions, but it can be very rewarding. So just stick with it. Okay?
Any comments? I have feeling you guys will bring a little bit more humor to that board and I think that'll be awesome. They'll love it. They'll love it. With that, we'll go to public comment. Folks online.
Billy, can you hear me? It's Andrew.
Hey, Andrew.
Hey. I just wanted to convey that the board, and I think Kate made it clear, but just the, we, we voted not only for Kyle, but in anticipation that we recommend John.
We lost you.
Did you, was that it?
After the word. After the word John.
Andrew, did we lose you?
Looks like you're muted.
Oh, sorry. Just just letting you know that the selection and how, you know, we really wanted to be in a position to have both recommended should the vacancy occur. So and I wanted to thank them.
Yeah, and I'm sorry to hear that most recent person that we had just appointed. Yeah, sorry to hear that. We are. We Nathan, it was great while he was on. And so we appreciate though the timing of this so that we could take advantage of having such great applications to work with and different perspectives to bring in. So sad, but we're excited for some new blood on the board.
Yeah, I think it'll be, I mean, actually, more public comment? Anyone else online? Hearing none, we'll bring it back. I think, well, go ahead. Is there any comments or folks want to say? I have one quick comment. I just think it's great that we'll have someone who owns a restaurant, you know, bar restaurant, and then someone who owns a retail business and people from both sides of the creek, you know. John, you being over in the plaza and Kyle, you being downtown, I just think it's a good representation of specifically, you know, we don't have any folks kind of in your niche in the board right now. Well, we do now. We do shortly. So thank you.
I move to appoint. So two different motions. Ready? Move to appoint Kyle Bucy to the NDDA with a term expiring in June 2027.
Second.
Got a motion in a second?
Mayor Billy?
Yes.
Trustee Larson?
Yes.
Trustee Corvalon?
Yes.
Trustee Ty?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Sterling?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion's approved.
Move to appoint John Thompson to the NDDA because a vacancy has just opened up. And so would like to appoint him also to the NDDA Board.
Till June 2028. Oh, sorry.
Second.
That's correct.
I'll have to check on that term.
Kate, isn't that right?
Oh.
She just said it earlier.
Okay.
Yeah, it's 6:28.
Sorry, I missed that. Thank you. Second from Trustee Ty. Trustee Corvalon?
Yes.
Trustee Ty?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Sterling?
Yes.
Mayor Billy?
Yes.
And Trustee Larson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, you guys. Appreciate it. You are. Both are. The DDA will definitely be psyched to have you on board. So thank you both.
Yeah, thank you, gentlemen. Now, you don't have to choose to continue to stay here if you don't want to, but
But you can because it's wicked interesting.
If you're, yeah, looking to
Well, actually, there's some interesting topics coming.
Keep our
There is
Actually, it is worth sticking around.
NDDA stuff later, so.
Yeah, there's two things about the NDDA as discussion items, but and then we have an action item. One thing about the DDA, but action item right now, Netherlands Public Comments on the Cross Mine Application to Dreams. I assume this is John?
Yes. So Mayor and Trustees, at our last meeting, we talked about drafting a letter that expressed some notes about the application for DMO that was submitted by Grand Island Resources for the cross mine. The Sustainability Advisory Board offered to work on that process. And I just want to give them some really big thanks. They spent a lot of time going through the application, which is thousands and thousands of pages really. And they had a special meeting to really talk about the concerns. My letter really says that they wrote the letter and that letter has gone through some process. So I want to just be clear that they that that letter came from staff too. But we wouldn't have been able to write it without the support they gave us. And the concerns they have are kind of what's expressed in that letter. And there's more too. I think this is a really important thing about this. This is a very big process and it affects different stakeholders differently. I wanted to make sure you guys had a little bit of background about what's happening. The process of public, the public engagement process, which is when people can submit comments about this mining operation, is completed on April 2. To have party status in this case, which means that if there's a hearing, we can go, requires us to do a mailing to mail our comments into the to Dreams, which is the Division of Mining Reclamation and Safety. So we want to do that well in advance at the deadline, and I'll do that via certified mail for our letter. Right now, that letter is with our water attorneys. They have some background in these kinds of operations and what needs to happen by statute. And so they're kind of looking at it right now. One of the questions that I have, this has been a very abbreviated process and with the amount of materials that has had to be reviewed for this, it's been quicker than a normal process. Normally, we would bring to you something that's a little bit more done, but given the fact that we do need to mail it, we're trying to make sure that you're comfortable with the general structure of the letter and what it has involved in it, and then also giving us a little bit of ability to modify it if there are things that come up that we think should be addressed. That's kind of the big crux of this staff report. We want to make sure you're approving of what we're doing. We want to make sure we get the party status. And then we want to make sure that we can we can keep working on it until the last second if possible. One thing I do want to talk about, I've been talking to the case manager at Dreams, which is the Division of Reclamation, Mining and Safety. We've had some concerns from our community about folks who don't want to give comments and would rather do it confidentially. The process that is in statute does not allow for confidential comments to be taken with the same brevity that a public comment would. And they really have this very detailed process for what a stakeholder is, and that affects Netherlands because we are not within two miles of the mine, but we are highly impacted by some of the things that could potentially happen. And so a lot of our comments in our letter, you'll see, were asking questions about their emergency plan, chemical storage on the site, how water is being treated, how we how what their future plans are for the site, questions about the expansion, kind of environmental impacts about what's happening up there. A lot of things that you would expect to see in an application like this that we would just like some further clarification on. The next step of this process largely is at Dreams. They're going to be reviewing the application for technical, they're using their technical expertise, and they have up to a year to do that. They have the ability to have a hearing related to this, just like one of our hearings, like for an SRU or something like that. It's a similar process with similar criteria. I did list those criteria in my staff report, and you'll notice that they are a little bit qualitative. They measure environmental impact, public health and safety, reclamation plans, compliance with regulations, financial assurance, impact on natural and cultural resources, technical adequacy and public input. One of the things that we've discussed is submitting the anonymous comments that we have received with our application. That is one process, and we are just currently clarifying with Dreams that will not affect our party status if there are confidential comments or anonymous comments included with our official comments. If that is the case where that might be in effect, what we would do is we would just send the anonymous comments separately, which we have the ability to do. And I think I can I can do that with like a cover letter that would be appropriate, and it wouldn't be coming from the board. It would just be like a community letter. And it will not have the same weight as our official letter, but it would still be weighted in that public input process. I think that that's really the large, the important things to know about this. I did include a draft of the letter that we're working on, and I would love more feedback on it if there are specific things that we should include in this. This letter is really structured relatively carefully to really provide questions about what we find question, like what the questions are in the application that we weren't answered. There's questions, like I said, about the emergency response, how the town might be notified of an emergency, procedural transparency, some of the regional context that we know about about this mineral belt and what might happen as the mining happens. Cultural and historical resources. We have a piece about environmental justice and vulnerable populations and making sure they're aware of things. And then we're looking for a defined timeline on decision making. The rest of the questions are really about water quality and environmental impact related to the footprints, acidic metals that we know to be present in the area, and then the water treatment system. There are some questions about what happens when the mine closes. They're not required to do water or they're not saying they would do water treatment following the closure of the mine, and we want to know a little bit more about that. And then some of the financial accountability and oversight, that's a really important piece of this application. They have to have the financial ability to operate this mine and to operate the closure of the mine. And so there's some questions about the surety and maybe some other questions too that we should address related to that issue. So I think ultimately what we're trying to get at is that the technical competency to mine, we just want to know a little bit more about that. And we also want to know about the their financial capacity to run the operation the way it would need to be run properly. If you have questions for me or you'd like anything added to this letter, I am happy to take them. Also, Cass is here and she worked extensively with SAB on this process to kind of develop these questions that we have that we've included in this letter. So if you have questions for her as well, I think she'd be happy to take them.
Yeah, I have some things of just questions whether or not they need to be included or not. Should we include anything around air quality or dust control? If things are being disturbed, like in the ground or whatnot, is that a concern at all?
The reason it's not in there is because they haven't defined how they will mill rock. So it depends on what that looks like because that's going to be primarily the concern about air quality. The method of mining they're using is what you would consider like traditional hard rock mining. It's a stoping technique where they're just going through the vein. And with that kind of mining, it may not be impactful on the air quality unless we know more about the vehicle trips per day that are going to be on Caribou and also like what kind of milling operations may exist. Those would be the primary air quality things. There is a sound component to that as well, though. And that could be something that that should be considered with blasting because there would be blasting involved.
And that was kind of my next one. So, okay, so and I don't know at this point if it's worth just asking the question, kind of like kicking the tires and, you know, whether it's dust control, even if we don't have it fully understand, a full understanding of how they're going to be mining. You know, just by asking air quality issues, but the noise, the traffic and like just our local infrastructure impacts. Would like to understand, you know, if there's if we should have a question or something around that, if they have any plans or answers around that. This was brought up, I think, also in some of the public comments from last time.
We can add a section.
We and I just wanted to say we do mention noise pollution, so we can expand upon that and just include all the concerns you mentioned.
Yeah, yeah. So not just the noise, but also the dust from all that heavy traffic on the dirt road and, you know, impacts to our infrastructure. Is there anything that we have to think about from a local emergency training perspective?
Yes.
Okay.
There are concerns, there's studies about mines and fires that
Yes.
That create concerns similar to what you're talking about. And it's a well documented area of academics. And we've talked about that, and that's something that I think is important to be mentioning because we do know that we're in one of the larger wildfire risk areas. And so I think like having a good plan for that is in place, in place would be good. There is that two mile radius and we are outside of that, but we are going to be the impact. I think we're in a contextually, it's going to impact us. And so one of the things we are asking for is to be included in their emergency planning efforts. And I think we could expand on that further about the planning.
That would be awesome. One of my other questions, if, and I don't know this, and this is why I wanted to ask it. I'm guessing with mining operations, there is greenhouse gas emissions?
Potentially. We don't know a ton about their actual operations.
Right, how they're going to do it.
That's one of the questions about the application is that part. There is also, Billy, I forgot, one other thing I forgot to mention, the creek, because it Coon Creek is impacted and the other creek as well, which isn't in the application. Sherwood, yeah.
Sherwood.
Yeah, and that is something we need to add to our application as well. It does impact Sherwood Creek.
Okay, okay. Yeah, so that was just another one of whether or not from a greenhouse gas perspective, and maybe kind of think about it just because C4A is on the agenda later. Is there anything that pops up in these situations around property values? I know that we're outside of that two mile mark, but we do have a lot of surrounding property. And even as you come into Netherlands, is there a potential that that'll affect property values?
Yes. And I think that's something that we're asking for more. It's really comes down to hydrology and the fracture nature of that rock.
Okay.
Water goes where water goes in this area of the Rockies. It's not, rock percolates. And so potentially, there could be situations where water might move in unexpected ways and come out in places where it's not supposed to. And so that's one of the questions we're asking because they have kind of a point treatment facility where they're going to be treating water in one specific place. And so one of the questions is, is how do you monitor to make sure that your mine isn't impacting other tunnels, like the Boulder Tunnel is very close by on another mine? And there are other tunnels up there. So it's possible that as they start mining and some of these practices can, you know, geology is just, it's a, it's a whole thing up there. So I think what I'm trying to say is that we want to know if there's possibility to monitor water in different places as well, so we can measure the impacts. There's also some potential other studies that they could do to kind of show that, but that's a question.
Yeah, and getting the whole hydrology thing, but even just the perception of some of those homes, like as you're going up that road and as you get closer into Netherlands, is there, you know, I mean, I would probably question if I was, you know, there's a mine, you know, a couple of, you know, miles up the road or whatnot. I don't know that that's a question or anything that we put into this. It was just something that I was thinking about and didn't know if you had known an angle.
Well, there is, the thing is, is that with the water, if there is heavy metals that leach, it could potentially impact a property owner. And if that was something that happened, there might need to be a remediation effort, which could involve the EPA. And that's something that happens in Clear Creek in Gilpin County, which is a 400 square mile superfund site that's just a few miles away. And so I think like thinking about that in advance and just like what those impacts are would be helpful.
Okay.
Caribou Road also was not designed to a traffic standard that would allow many, many truckloads up that road. And it's also graded at a, it just, you know, trucks can't get up there very easily. So that's something that needs to be looked at. One thing I noted in my staff report, but I didn't say, is that this still needs to go through Boulder County permitting process if and when the this permit is issued. And there may be other state agencies involved before that happens. Boulder County's process is very similar to our SRU process. And so I think that's kind of what their step with Boulder would be. So this process still has things to figure out in some of these spaces. And one of our jobs has been to figure out where to put the, you know, where the concern needs to be addressed to be at the right agency.
But the Boulder County process would take effect after it's been named a DMO.
Correct.
Boulder County process is more about the mill operations? Or would the Boulder County process also have to be passed before they start any trucking?
Yeah, mining as well is what we understand.
Correct.
That's what I'm looking for.
Those are all just the thoughts that I had after reading the the letter.
Just to clarify, do you guys have any other questions that you'd like to address? And then the other question would be, is it okay if we keep working on this letter a little bit?
Yeah, I think you've got nods.
I mean, I thought we were doing clarifying questions.
Yeah, we do clarify questions first and then public comment, but we've got your questions. That will, I'll read right before, after we, after public comments. With that, any more clarifying questions? Tanya?
Yeah. So do we want more people from the community to send letters before the deadline? What was it, April 3? Is that what the deadline was?
April 2nd and yes. And I think what the you can, they can be submitted on the website, which we can put
Town and Netherlands website?
On the Dreams, the Dreams website.
No, the State Dreams website.
And we could probably
If we put something on our website to with a link to it or something to make it easier for people? Or something where we post that link and
We talked about before that we don't want, we don't want to tell people what to say, but
I know that, but just say
Isn't it okay if we tell them timelines and like logistics?
So, yeah.
Yeah.
We have to be careful with it.
Yeah, we just have to be clear on the facts of the process.
They can write in support using that same link.
Yeah, exactly.
Right, just write in support or
Works at the mine, so he might be all for it. Now, my question is, on the letter, it says that the footprint is expanding to, what was it, 205 acres? Do you know when it was being operated before, a few years ago by the cross mine? What was the footprint they were working on then?
9.9.
9.9. That's what Hendrix did as well? Was it even smaller with Hendrix?
I think it was the same because I think that's kind of I think it was the same because I think that's kind of, they had to be like under 10 acres is kind of
Yeah. It's a cluster building sits there.
Wow.
Is the, the operational footprint currently. And they are, if you look at the map, they are looking to expand sort of up the road that you take to get to the top to the other part of the cross mine. It's near the peak, well, just north of the peak of Caribou or Caribou Peak.
200 and, okay, yeah, I think that's, that's worth noting how much larger it is. Because I think a lot of people might think, well, there's a mine there already, you know, so what's the difference? But that's significant. So anyway, thanks for bringing this to our attention again. And, yeah, thanks.
It's possible that that expansion includes primarily underground tunnels and they're talking about opening, or maybe it's like how they're tunneling, but that isn't 100% clear to us in the application and that's what we're asking clarification on.
Yeah, now, what does that mean if the land is owned by, do they have to own the land above the tunnel? Or can the land above the tunnel be national forest?
It's complicated because mineral rights can be separated from that. So it really, I don't have a great answer for that. I don't know, Jennifer, if you wanted, if that's the right way to say that, but.
Yeah. Yeah, no, I mean, I don't know if this is worth mentioning, but, you know, there could be an economic impact to the town of Nederland by having that act, you know, that area which is beloved by, you know, it's where I take everybody who comes to visit, impacted, you know, where nobody wants to go up there anymore. Maybe it's, I don't know if it's worth mentioning in the letter or whatever, but I do think it could have another negative being economic to our town, negative.
Yeah, I mean, you talk about the kind of the impact on that recreation in that area, don't we, Jonathan?
We did. And also there's wildlife impacts for the same reason.
Oh, yeah.
Economy is probably a good thing to call it, too.
Yeah, no, I mean, expansive, I think
There's also the historical, the town, the old town of Eldora stuff up there, yeah.
It used to be Nederland, right? Well, it wasn't, it was Caribou, but then they moved down to Nederland, yeah. All right, well, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, but Tanya did say something, kind of clues over, is, are we calling out economic, potential economic?
I mean, I don't know if it's relevant, I thought I'd mentioned. I don't know if they care, but.
With that, we'll go to public comment, first in the room, any public comment here on the, on our, our, coming together with a, it's not written here on top of the, but our public comment on the cross mines, Dreams application, any public comment in the room? Jim?
My body's wearing out. Oops. I need assisted living. I just think the, the operation would really, I'd do the town economically good, and I think it's a good thing.
So the operation of the mine itself would be good economic, economically good? Thanks. Folks in the room first? And if not, we'll go folks online, any comments on our public comment to the cross mine application to Dreams? All right, so we'll, we can bring it back to the board. I couldn't hear anyone make comment here, but, what? Oh, yeah, if you got a comment in the room?
No, John.
Oh, hey, John.
I did, I just wanted to reiterate, our letter is designed to express concerns and questions about the process, not to oppose. This is still a, kind of a quasi judicial decision making process and we want to be transparent in our participation and we want to raise the things that are important to Nederland to consider. But it is not made as a, as an expression of opposition. It's more of an expression of concerns and an ask for additional information so that we have a, all the information that the board would need to really understand what this operation is going to look like.
Yep. Thank you.
Thanks, Jennifer.
Do you expect a response from them?
This letter, what the purpose of this letter is, there's two kinds of public engagement that happen in this. They, the ones, if, what we're, you can submit a comment just as the public, but for stakeholders, which Nederland is, is a stakeholder, we can also submit a comment that allows us party status in whatever hearing might happen for this. That's still a Dreams decision. They don't have to have a hearing, but they could have a hearing. And from my understanding, like in cases like this, they are more likely than not, but it's really a question of if they find something that needs to be discussed. And so by submitting a letter of concerns like this, what it would allow us to do is to participate in that hearing if and when it happened. That's why this distinction between anonymous comments and non-anonymous comments is important because if we submit anonymously, then we won't have that party status.
Thank you.
Can I just jump in here too and just say that it's, it's going to be similar to your town processes as well, when somebody provides a written comment or provides comment at a public hearing, you, there's no obligation to respond and, you know, likely I would expect you wouldn't get a response. What you would see is if the town's comments influenced the decision maker, you would see a change in, in how the decision is made.
Thanks, Jennifer, that makes sense. So there are any written motions here, so help us, Jennifer, if there needs to be or needed to be. But there are questions, we have questions, requests for direction, it's an action item, so. You have requests for directions, would these be kind of, need to be stated as, as a motion or really just as nods afore with these requests?
It's an action item.
Jennifer?
Yeah, I would go ahead and just do a motion to approve submission of a letter in substantially the form that was provided in the packet. Is that, does that work for you, John?
Yes, and just as long as it's clear that we can, you know
Submit modifications.
Yes.
Just before, before you do, because, you know, I wasn't part of the clarifying questions, but I just wanted to reiterate something I think Nicole brought up, is the one, you know, A, thanks Cassidy to SAB, this is a really good sort of structured letter, I think, the form it was taken of the sort of raising questions and asking for input from the Dreams Board. But the one piece that does, did seem to be missing that I think you brought up was the health and safety impact in the town of Nederland due to traffic. Because, you know, if this does move forward, we're looking, there will be mining for years prior to the construction of a mill. And so there will be a long period of, last time they said up to 70 heavy trucks a day coming through down Caribou, which isn't graded or meant for it, and then through town, which is the, that's the impact I see on community is the health and safety of those, the heavy trucks, I mean, 20 plus tons coming through town at that frequency. So that was the one addition I wanted to see.
Just following up, we want to say similar things about, about Coon Creek because it does run through town the same way, through people's property. So we will add that for both points about a more localized impact on our, on our town.
Any other clarifying things for them to add into the letter? I move to support, I make a motion to support submitting the letter as the town's formal response to the cross gold mine DMO conversation application.
Second.
Conversion.
Can I make a friendly amendment just to give the, with the, with the understanding that the town administrator will continue to modify and improve the letter prior to submission?
Yes.
Second?
I think, Ty, did you already second? Okay.
Mayor Billy?
Yes.
Trustee Ty?
Yes.
Trustee Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Sterling?
Yes.
And trustee Corkalon?
Yes.
Thank you, the motion's approved.
Do you need anything else from us on this jump, or Jennifer?
No, thank you.
Thank you. With that, we'll go to our first discussion item of the evening, the CC4CA presentation and voting member appointment.
Yeah, thank you. I'm just pulling up the presentation here on the shared screen. So as you may know, Colorado Communities for Climate Action, or CC4CA, is a coalition of local governments advocating for state and federal climate action. Nederland is a member community and that means we have a vote on the board of directors. So after the presentation, we will need to discuss appointment of a primary and secondary voting member to represent Nederland at CC4CA. And I believe the procedure will be, we will discuss who those appointments might be and if we come to, if you come to an agreement, then we will put that on the consent agenda for next time. And so that's just something to note. For the presentation today, Anita Seitz is the Sorry about that. Anita Seitz is the advocacy director for CC4CA and is virtual here. And she will be giving this presentation to provide more context to you all. And Anita, I'll be doing the slides, so just let me know when you want to move to the next one.
Thank you so much, Cassidy, and thank you, Mayor, Mayor Protem, and trustees for having me here tonight. Colorado Communities for Climate Action is a coalition of local governments who have come together for the express purpose of pushing for stronger state and federal climate action. Nederland joined in 2018. And I had the pleasure of meeting with Cassidy and John last month, just to onboard them, kind of talk about what it is we do, how we operate. And we realized in that conversation, it had been a minute since we had presented to this board of trustees. And so we volunteered to, to kind of come in and refresh your memory on the work that we do, how we support you in state policy advocacy as it pertains to climate and local governments. A little bit about me, my name is Anita Seitz, as Cass mentioned. I have worked with CC4CA for three years. But actually, prior to that, when I served on the Westminster City Council for eight years, I was the first president of CC4CA. So I've been working with the organization as a member and then as an employee since 2016. So really love this organization and I'm excited to share with you what we've been able to accomplish over the last few years. Similar to me, our executive director is Jacob Smith. He is also a former mayor, he was the mayor of Golden. And then our third member of our core group is Lindsay X., who was the climate and sustainability head for the city of Fort Collins. So local government is deeply steeped in this organization. We care a lot about local government, we know how hard you work. And we like being able to elevate the ability of our members to advocate for things that they care about quite a bit, but may not have the capacity to do as individual local governments. So I'd love to go to the next slide. Okay, so what is it that we actually do? We do policy advocacy mainly. And we do do that at the state legislature during the legislative session, which runs from January through May. And we've been really successful. There hasn't been a bill over the last eight years that CC4CA's fingerprints aren't all over that had, that is climate related. And we've had some really great climate, nation leading climate legislation in Colorado. So we're proud of that track record. What we really like to do is make sure the voice of local government is included in those conversations, that something that sounds good but might have a pretty bad impact in implementation on a local government, that those, that those considerations are given. But our work isn't done just when we pass legislation. And we have been a little bit victims of our own success, really working at state agencies in the rulemaking because truly the devil is in the details and making sure that after legislation is passed, when it goes to the Air Quality Control Commission or to the Public Utilities Commission or the Energy and Carbon Management Commission, that the final rules reflect the statutory direction and maximize both the climate and equity benefits of that rule. We also work in a more limited capacity on federal policy. We're a small organization, there's three of us that are core, so we always have to be prioritizing where we put our energy. And with federal work, oftentimes, a small Colorado coalition is not going to make a big difference. Recently, that's changed, and so we have been engaging in a little bit more federal work. In fact, on Monday, CC4CA members in the 8th Congressional District are going to be meeting with Congressman Evans and his office to try to advocate for retention of federal funding that supports local governments' efforts to serve their community. We also provide pretty frequent workshops and trainings virtually. These are both for mem, for local electeds or staff. Oftentimes, they're high level, just giving like, hey, this is the lay of the land. And other times, they're very kind of in-depth. Functionally, this is how you can achieve this outcome that you're looking to do in your local government. We like to do science and policy updates and briefings. And oftentimes, those are member led. Our members will let us know what they'd like to learn a little bit more about. Recently, nuclear energy is something that our members are asking us to do a deeper dive on. Workforce, particularly workforce to support building decarbonization goals is another area that our members have asked us to focus on. Then we have other resources that we share throughout the year, newsletters, information on federal funding that's available to local governments or state funding. But we really do try to be responsive to the evolving needs of our members. Next slide. So CC4CA is 44 local governments strong. So collectively, our members represent just under a third of the state's population. We are pretty diverse, if you look at us. So we are two thirds rural, we are, half of our members are West Slope. So we, you know, and then we have the rest here are on the Front Range. And we have very small communities and very large communities. So we like to say that we are as diverse as Aspen and Adams County, but we believe that that diversity speaks to the ubiquitous nature and, and threat that local governments are feeling from climate change and feeling that today, not anticipating it at a future date. Climate impacts such as wildfire, persistent high heat days, floods, extreme weather events, including hail, can be incredibly disruptive to local governments, making it harder for you to treat water, to have health and safety for your residents. It can impact property, your infrastructure. And so in many ways, a lack of state action on climate can be an unfunded mandate on local governments. an unfunded mandate on local governments. Okay. So I'd like to talk to you just for one more minute, and then I'll, I'll speed it up, Cass. I hope I'm not taking too long and get the big hook out if you need me to stop talking. I want to talk to the, you about the benefit of collective impact and why we exist. We were founded after a, actually, a group of local governments in Boulder County found a lot of success partnering with other local governments along the US 36 corridor. And they were able to successfully advocate for both federal and state funding. And they took this model and thought about how could we use collective action to really make a difference when it comes to climate policy? Because when you go to the state Capitol and you're testifying as your community, you'll probably catch the attention of your state representative and your state senator. But you may not have very much credibility or sway with anyone outside of that bubble. When you come together with this group, we capture a lot more attention, right? When you say you're with a group that has a third of the state's population just underrepresented, it, it makes the conversation go different, and the attention we are given is different. We're also a unique voice at the Capitol. Local governments banded together on this very specific focus allows us to be kind of an important stakeholder in many conversations. So we often are meeting with state agencies and other stakeholders to kind of hear this unique perspective. So it's been, it's been very, we feel like, a very successful model. And in fact, some of our nonprofit coalition partners have wished that there were CC4CA's in, in other states. Next slide. All right. So this is how we are structured. I just told you we had 44 members. Every single member has a voting member on our Board of Director, and you can have an alternate. CC4CA is a really unique organization in a different way. Some local governments have staff serve as their board, as their board member. Some have local electeds, and there is no hierarchy. We, there's no difference in how we treat staff or elected at CC4CA. So that is completely at the discretion of our members. So as I said, you can have one board member, one alternate, but as many of you can attend as you like. It's just each community only has one vote. We then, and those meetings are every other month. They are the third Thursday, or I'm sorry, the third Friday. And we would love to see Nederland there. The next committee I want to talk about is our Policy Committee, and they are really in charge of overseeing the policy and advocacy work of CC4CA. I just heard that you reappointed, it sounded like Erica Thorley, to your Sustainability Board. She is actually currently the Chair of CC4CA's Policy Committee. She works for Erie as her day job, and she's been a really active and wonderful member for CC4CA. So she chairs that committee. That committee meets once a month on Thursday, on the, I'm sorry, the second Thursday of the month, and at 1:00. And you, again, can have one member and alternates, but again, just one vote on that committee.
Can I back you up? So the Policy Committee is second Thursdays monthly at 1:00 PM?
Correct.
And then what's the, what was the first one, Finance Committee or Board of Directors? What was your first one?
Board of Directors, and that meets every other month on the third Friday. And I believe it is at 9:00 in the morning, but let me just double check. You would think I would have that memorized.
Every other one.
Right? And that it is at 9:00. The meeting is an hour and a half, and the next meeting will be April 18th, and you are all welcome to join. Legislative Committee is an offshoot of Policy Committee, and as the name would, would lead you to believe, it, it really focuses on the state legislative process. And so this committee meets more frequently during the legislative session. We meet twice a month, on the first and the third Wednesdays of the month at 12:15, and we meet for an hour and 15 minutes. And in that committee, our members take positions on, we, staff will provide a bill analysis. These are, these are pieces of legislation that will impact climate, or impact local government's ability to work on climate. And then our committee will read through the analysis, decide if they agree with us or not, and vote on what positions we will take on, on legislate, legislation. One thing I failed to mention, and it's pretty important about CC4CA, is we operate on a unanimous consent threshold. We have a policy statement that Nederland agreed to when you, when you joined. We update it periodically, typically every two years. And to change anything on it, we need unanimous consent. If we have one member who says, no, I can't live with that position on a bill, we don't take it. It doesn't sound-
Can I ask why you guys do that?
It's a, it's a good question, because it doesn't sound like it would be functional, right? Having 44 different members. But we have found that it really is a high level of trust than with our members. They don't feel like they're going to join this organization that's going to get them out ahead of their community, or get them into trouble. And on the other side, when we testify and we explain that we have that unanimous consent threshold, that means a lot at the legislature. So it really adds some oomph to our position. We've been lucky so far. When you think of, you know, my boss having 44, you know, 44 bosses, right? The executive director having 44 bosses. On paper, it shouldn't work, but I believe because we're so closely aligned around a very specific mission and function, we have just benefited from that alignment, and it has not been an issue in the entire existence of the organization. You know, I think that there has been conversations time to time, do we want to change that ever? I think the Metro Mayor's Caucus has, used to have that model and did change it. Each time that conversation happens, our members let us know, no, actually, we really like the unanimous consent threshold. So that's, that's where we're at right now. I will tell you, our members act with a lot of deference and respect for each other. So oftentimes, the threshold is not, do I love it? Or is this exactly the policy I would like? It's, can I live with it? And so making that space, like, hey, this isn't exactly how we would like it, but it's important to enough that I'm just gonna, I'll abstain and, and let the others take the position. You also saw, I didn't mention the Finance Committee. Again, each member community can have a voting member on the Finance Committee, but only one Finance Committee voting member. But you could have as many people want to serve on that as possible. It's exactly what you would expect. It's really just our budget and our finances and approving that. One thing I wanted to say, there are these committees, but there's no expectation that Nederland has folks on each one of them. So some of our communities just attend as, at the Board of Directors meetings and our annual retreat, or, you know, just the Board of Directors meetings. Some have one person that serves at Board of Directors, another at Finance, another at Policy, another at Ledge. It really is up to you how you want to participate, but we do need at least one voting member for the Board of Directors. And that person has to be empowered to represent Nederland. On the bottom, you'll see it says Ad Hoc Working Group. From time to time, members will really be interested in a topic and will create an ad hoc working group made up of kind of volunteers from different local governments that are interested in the topic. They will then often make a recommendation to the Board of Directors to kind of direct staff to either take on additional work or to change, you know, change something about how the organization operates. An example of that was during COVID. We had kind of, how do we work on climate during COVID, and heating of outdoor spaces and all of the waste that came with it? Next slide. 2024 was an interesting session. It really put local governments kind of in tension with a lot of our state allies on climate, because many of the pieces of legislation last year sought to rebalance state, what, what is an area of statewide concern and what is an area of local control. And CC4CA worked really hard last year on amendments to make challenging bills better, and, and to make good bills even better. So last year was all about amendments. I do know, I believe Cass was mentioning that Nederland's very interested in circular economy and, and waste reduction, and I did want to let you know, we were instrumental in the Producer Responsibility Bill that passed in 2022. And then also, last year, making sure that the recommendations made it through the Joint Budget Committee at the state Capitol, and we're following that process. We have a member actually on the Producer Responsibility Board right now. Are you all familiar with Producer Responsibility?
Nope.
No.
I'll try to be quick. That was just a state law that was passed that said that producers of packaging waste, rather than forcing local governments or residents to pay for recycling of that material, would have to create a producer recycle, a responsibility organization, charge themselves a fee on that packaging material based off of the weight and the recyclability of the, the material. And that fee then would go statewide to meet the recycling needs of Colorado. And so it will be used, once it gets going and implemented, that money will be used to help support the efforts of, you know, local governments who have a recycling center or recycling program, for communities that don't, to help lower, or I'm sorry, to pay for the cost for individual recycling. So we're pretty excited about this. We're looking forward to it being fully launched. But hopefully, we have good, good things to come, and it was a kind of first in nation. They do this in Europe, but not in, in the United States at this scale, so. So we can move on to the next slide. I'm happy to answer questions on any legislation from last session that you may have lingering questions on. If I can't answer them tonight, I can always get back to you with the answer. This legislative session is proving to also be interesting. Colorado is facing a very significant budget crisis. The Joint Budget Commission just received the March report. And unfortunately, even with all of the cuts that have already been made in the state budget this session, we still have a $1.2 billion in the red shortfall for, for the budget. So it's hard for me to even picture $1.2 billion, but that is, unfortunately, that is the landscape we're working in. And so there's going to be hard decisions and sacrifices made this year. And so bills that will move forward will not have any fiscal noted, attached to them. And programs that we all care about are likely to be cut. And so we are doing a combination of what are the good ideas that don't need a fiscal note? What are the programs and funding at the state level that relate to our work that we have to do defense on? And then do we build momentum for future years? So those are the approaches. We do have contract lobbyists that support us. This year, we have priorities for on-bill repayment. This is a bill that we're really excited about. It's actually going to be in a committee hearing on Thursday, but it allows, basically, it allows residents or businesses to make energy efficiency investments or clean energy investments, the same way we purchase our cell phones, to be able to finance it on their, their utility bill at a very low interest rate. And the, the debt stays with the meter, rather than the individual, because the investments stay at that, that location. So it's a really great tool to allow more people to participate in these investments, particularly so they don't miss out on federal funding, any federal funding or state funding that remains for this. Many people didn't have the upfront capital to purchase a heat pump, even if they could get, you know, 30% off of it due to federal funding. So that will be in hearing. This is now, the Governor Polis really likes this idea. It will, he, he mentioned it in the state of, the state, so our fingers are crossed. This will be a great enabling tool for building decarbonization in the state. Excel will be required to use it, but every other utility in the state can choose to use it if they want. It's funded by $100 million of unclaimed property, unclaimed property tax, and then that will get repaid, or unclaimed property, not tax, unclaimed property, and then that gets repaid with interest, because this is a very low default vehicle for investors. So we have kind of listed there some other priorities we have. I'm happy to talk about any of these in depth now or later, but I'll go on to the next slide. So, Paul, we do a lot of policy and regulatory advocacy at the Air Quality Control Commission, at the Energy and Carbon Management Commission, at the Public Utility Commission. We, we work very closely with the Colorado Energy Office, often advocating for local governments. We really pushed hard with their climate pollution reduction grant to have the inclusion of a local policy accelerator. They did end up including that in their application, and they were awarded federal fundings under the CPRG. So there will be about $70 million for a local climate policy accelerator within that grant. We also partner with the Department of Local Affairs and the Department of Natural Resources, and, and partner is probably the wrong word. We stakeholder with them and try to make sure that their work that impacts our areas taken, provide the most equitable and climate-focused solutions. Next slide. This is just a slide with some recent highlights, things that we have worked on. I know I'm going long, so I'm just gonna cut through, but I'm happy to answer questions about any of those advocacy highlights. Next slide. This is how you can be engaged. If climate is your, is your GM, it's something you're really passionate about, we can support you in, in advocating for it at the state level and at the federal level. So we support you with legislative testimony. We make it as simple for you to participate as possible. Register in you. We provide support the day of to let you know when the committee hearing has started. We will provide sample talking points, fact sheets about the bill, anything to make it easier for you to use your voice and your station as a trustee, or your staff as an expert in their, their field, to, to make a difference on policy that's important to you. Similarly, we do the same thing with regulatory hearings, both verbally and written comments. We invite our members to meet with both state and federal elected officials, but also with agency officials, to help you develop those relationships and to help make sure they hear your unique concerns. We often support our members in publishing letters to the editor. And then this is a big thing that I, I hope we get someone from Nederland this year. We have an annual meeting in Vail. We do not charge a registration fee for it. You just have to pay for your lodging, and the food is provided. Vail actually hosts it for us. But it's a wonderful opportunity to meet with other local officials. local officials who care deeply about climate. And then I'd encourage you to sign up for CC4CA newsletters. We have an engagement newsletter that tells you all about advocacy opportunities, a roundup that tells you about recent successes, and a federal and state funding newsletter that tells you about opportunities to get funds to help meet your, your articulated climate goals and that you've maybe would like to accelerate. And next slide, I believe that is it. And this, these are just examples of us in action. Our members, some of the op-eds, our members have written with our support. It's a really great opportunity to, to make an impact at the state level. And next slide.
Great, thank you, Anita. And before we talk about the voting member appointments, does anyone from the board have questions for Anita on CC4CA?
Are the meetings hybrid, in person, virtual?
They are virtual, other than our annual retreat.
And the annual retreat is, is, you know, if one can make it, obviously.
Yeah.
It's wonderful and it's, you know, if possible.
It, it's spectacular. It's June 11th through the 13th.
Thank you. Any other questions for Anita or Cass? I can, um, oh, sorry. I will go to, are there any clarifying questions? Because if not, I will go to public comment. Because it is discussion item. Any public comments? No one's in the room. Any public comments on the CC4CA presentation and our voting member appointments? Okay. If not, bringing back to the board for its discussion.
Yeah, and I'll just say that staff does have a recommendation for the board. We recommend that whoever the board appoints as the primary, they should try and make it to the bi-monthly CC4CA meetings and ensure someone else can attend if they can't. We recommend that a board of trustees member volunteer if possible. And if not, if you're, if no one is able to volunteer for that position, then we suggest that you appoint a staff member from the planning department, which would be either Britt, Mink, or myself. And if, obviously, you can make another appointment as well, but those are just our recommendations.
Thank you.
And I think, wasn't traditionally the sustainability coordinator was going to those meetings?
Yes, I've been attending the meetings, but not as like the voting member necessarily.
Voting member, okay. All right, gotcha. I'm gonna pull myself out right now because I do not have capacity to do that. So, no, on my behalf.
I was actually going to, you know, I've gotten kind of tired of these monthly reports where I keep saying PCA hasn't met.
Yeah, what are you doing?
None of those met. I feel like I have not been pulling my weight on this. And given that, you know, I'm also working on a climate satellite right now, this is definitely up my alley and would love to support, do more to support CC4CA. So if no one else wants it, I will throw my name in the hat.
And then have like Cass as the second?
I, I do open to that.
My question is, because I think one of the recommendations was potentially of somebody from the planning commission?
No, planning department.
Department.
And Cass in the planning department.
To clarify, right now, Tom Mahold from the planning commission is going. And so was there any conversation, was Tom still wanting to do that, expecting to do that?
I, Cassie might have a different idea. I think he is interested in making sure the town is supported in that body. I think we could have a conversation with him about that if you guys would like us to, although his, there may be more direct role for a staff member or potentially for Cass. That would be one of the things that I would be, I, I think having Cass be that person could be really good because it really makes sure that we have consistency to support Chris, like also so they can, you know, there, there's a staff person and a, you know, an elected official. But the staff person could be the other person as well. So, and it could be Tom, too. It really just depends on the connection.
I spoke with Tom about it and he's the one that kind of said, hey, you know, they contacted me and said, no one from Ned's going, so I can go. And he's like, who's supposed to be going? And there was someone who had put their hand up for it back, you know, last fall, last spring. But, um, so he started going for us, but he didn't seem, you know, unless he's totally got, he, what he told me was it's a really worthwhile thing to be part of, you know, we should be part of it. And he's been going, but I think he, you know, I think he'd be quite okay with someone on the BOT actually being there to represent.
Yeah, and he, and I asked him to attend with me because I would like, I wanted some support, especially because he had been to those meetings before, and so he could provide a bit more context for me as well. And I think that Britt and I decided to recommend that a BOT member go because ultimately it would come back to you. And so if someone is able to attend, then it's more of a first person account than having someone from another board or staff.
Yeah. Thank you. Thanks, Chris. I was kind of going to be willing to, but I appreciate it if, if I didn't have to. And there may be, and there may be, I mean, I guess, you know, if Tom has an interest, you talked about all these committees, it sounds like more people could join legislative and all these other committees.
I think you still have to be a member or it has to be one of the two.
Yeah, Anita, actually, I have a clarifying question on that. So we have a vote for the board of directors, but then could it be a different voting member on the legislative committee?
Like a third person?
Or the policy committee than is the voting member for the board of directors?
Correct. So for some communities, they have about six people serving on various boards and committees. It's a large lift for any one person to, to be, to do it all.
Yeah, when I heard you talk, what I heard you say is if more people, so yeah, I mean, that might be, Tom might have a, he likes the legislative stuff, that's for sure. But what, you know, I guess we could ask him. Tanya, what are you thinking?
I, I'm thinking Chris Larson would be great at it, and I thank him for stepping up. I don't have any extra capacity myself. So not that I don't think it's a worthy meeting and cause and group, and I thank the presenter for the very good presentation.
Thanks, Tanya. Thanks. And Tom did say, just, he thinks it'd be real worthwhile for Netherlands that we are in this and involved.
Tom, Tom who?
Mahold, when he talked to me about it before, not, not him, you know, when he decided to go because no one from the BOT was going and they called him because he, he was going when he was on the BOT and then he stopped. But he's just, he's kind of been going because no one from the BOT's been going, but he kind of was saying, you know, it'd be worth it for someone from the BOT to be going to this.
Sure.
So thanks, Chris.
Yeah, thanks, Chris.
So, so the first question seems to be answered, that Chris Larson would volunteer to be on the primary. And as for secondary, are you asking us or like, Cass, you really seem like the logical person over Brett, so you're basically?
Yeah, and I've, I've been attending them already. And if I can't attend, then I'm making sure you know that Britt or Tom was there at the time. But I am happy to be the alternate, the secondary voting member.
Great. Thank you. Do you have all that you need from us?
I believe so. And then if we do, if you do want to appoint someone else to be on like the legislative committee, like if Tom Mahold wants to do that and be the voting member, we can always bring that back to you and have that discussion.
Okay.
Would there be one more potential role, too, or legislative and policy, or is it?
Well, she said like one town had six people. And so it's kind of like, maybe ask Tom if he's interested in what he'd want to do other than being on the board of directors.
Yeah, I think what we would need to bring before you would be who would have the authority to vote for the town, but anyone can attend, as Anita said, anyone can attend those committee meetings.
Okay, well, let's, my preference in to make that very clear, like right now, is that it would be Chris and you.
Yeah.
That's, that's who has voting power.
Right.
And if we, if we apply, if anyone else wants to attend, fine, but those are the two who have voting power.
Yeah, and we would tell Anita that so that she's aware.
Yeah. Yeah, we also don't have to have a third person or anyone else.
Would we need a stand-in if one of these guys couldn't?
They are the stand-in for each other.
Cass is the stand-in for Chris. Chris is ideally at all the meetings.
Okay, wasn't totally clear about that.
Yeah, no, no worries. It was in one of the bullets here in the, one of the pages.
Great, so I think we'll bring this to you on consent for next time with Chris as the primary and myself as the secondary voting members.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
Thanks, Anita.
Well, thanks, everyone. And with that, we are moving to our second discussion, discussion item of the night, which is the Netherlands Downtown Development Authority Bylaws Amendment. Kate?
I'll start us off, and, but this has been a collaborative effort between the DDA and especially Kate and I, as we've kind of been looking at the bylaws and thinking about how the DDA and the Board of Trustees work together on the projects that happened in Netherlands. Really, the genesis of this is that we discovered that the bylaws were originally adopted in 2011, and then they were, they were kind of being updated in 2018, but they were never actually approved by the Board of Trustees. And when we kind of discovered that, the DDA took the initiative to go ahead and start looking at those bylaws and thinking about what their current practices are, how they align with the town policies, and how we could really make sure that we have a really strong collaborative relationship between the board and, between both boards. I just wanted to thank everybody for working on this. It's been a big lift for the DDA, it's been a big lift for staff, and I think we're in a place now where my staff report kind of details some of the things that I think are important for you guys to consider as we draft these bylaws. Kate's staff report, which is also in there, she kind of, the, the DDA went through and kind of identified what the big differences were between the 2018 version of the bylaws and the 2011. You see that in the beginning of my staff report, there are some government enhancements, which just kind of add sections about conflict of interest, the secretary committee responsibilities and competitive bidding. There's information about voting rights clarification for the Board of Trustees liaison. The NDDA proposes that that person have full voting rights. And then there's language about the audit, which is important for us to have timely updates for the audit because that's something that affects the town finances as well. In my staff report, there's a couple other considerations that I think are important based on the conversations that we have had to date about the collaboration between the NDDA and the board. These are just things that I think will clarify how things work and maybe build some capacity among staff of both organizations to work together. Kate has recommended that we do a working agreement, MOU, that could dictate like how all of these policies and procedures work together. And what I'm, I think I'm saying in my staff report is I think that's a good idea and we should kind of show in the bylaws where those things would be, would be relevant. In general, the things that I think that you guys should talk about are the governance and appointments process and making sure that the BOT authority is very clear in the bylaws. It's important that the Board of Trustees have full discretion to appoint members of the DDA with or without recommendation. And I'm recommending that we just include that in the bylaws to ensure transparency and prevent disputes in the future. BOT liaison voting rights, this has been a, a large conversation. The DDA has proposed granting the Board of Trustees liaison full voting rights on the board. Our staff agrees that this would give the BOT additional input on the board and that generally the issues that the DDA votes on are administrative matters. So it is unlikely that there would ever be a conflict of interest between a person serving on both boards. So we are recommending that, that, that would be a good language to include in the bylaws. I have a section in here about strengthening the budget process and ensuring collaboration and transparency. You have a statutory authority for approving the DDA budget. I think that one of the things that might help with how that works is to define a process for the executive director of the DDA, the town administrator, and the finance director to work together to make sure everything's aligned. I've recommended a little process flow here where, in general, the budget could be delivered to the board by November 1st. If you remember, we have a deadline of December 15th where we have to have the budget approved, and that would give us time to have a discussion about that budget, and then it could go through the regular hearing process with the town budget. And I think that's important just to make sure, in our last budget process, there were questions. This would give us the time to really interrogate that so that you guys get, you're comfortable with what you're approving. For that one, I did recommend placing it in the bylaws, but making sure that detailed process would just be in the MOU so we have the flexibility to have a living document that goes with those bylaws. Project oversight. In the past, the DDA would bring resolutions to the board because of the funding structures that were in place. And that is not, no longer the practice that's being, that, that needs to happen. But there are still NDDA projects that may happen on town property, like such as like the public right of way. And that really impacts the town's infrastructure, public safety, maintenance kinds of things. And so we've been thinking a lot about how this could look and what could happen. And I think one of the things that might happen is that for projects that come to the, that are on town right of way, a resolution could happen the same way as it did before. And we could also create like a coordination process just to make sure that we're protecting assets and making sure that projects meet any standards that we have and that we're efficiently working through our processes if permits are required or something. And this is really similar to what we do for any development project. We just have our pre-project meeting, and then we establish a process for project oversight based on how complex it is. I think this is another one that should be, that we should have that requirement placed in the bylaws, but that the process for it would be in the MOU, just a working document. Plan of development, this is really an important document. For the DDA, it's statutory acquired, but for the board, this is the way that we can know what the projects are and kind of how they align with the town goals and, and make sure that we're all on the same page. The plan of development is really the next big project for the DDA to get approved. And I think that there is some board action that's required for that as well. And so what I am proposing is that, that plan of development could be looked at annually, which would give us time to think about what's happening, where priorities are, that kind of thing. Overall, those are kind of the areas that I think have come up over the conversation about how the DDA works with the town. I have several requests for direction here, and basically it is, do you approve of the DDA's proposed bylaw updates? And then would you like any additional language in the bylaws to clarify this appointment authority, liaison voting, the budget process, project oversight, plan of development, and then the creation of this working agreement, the MOU document? And then just making sure that we address any other concerns or recommendations you might have that you'd like to bring to the DDA. In terms of next steps, I think the most appropriate thing would be to bring these changes back to the DDA so they can consider that as well. Hopefully, they'll find consensus with you on that. And then what we would do is bring that final document back to you for approval. There, you're, I don't know the date of your next meeting, but it would be the April meeting. Yep, they would, the ninth. So they would consider on the ninth, which means we could potentially consider it as early as the second meeting in April. And then as soon as that's done, we had been planning to have a joint work session, and we'd still, like, staff would still recommend that we do that, and it could be focused on this plan of development and the development of that working agreement MOU. So that's what you find in my staff report. Kate, do you want to kind of go over your process and what's been happening on the DDA side?
Well, I'm not going to go into too much because I think that John really gave you the umbrella for how all this has been happening. You know, my aim in there is really to supplement so you can see what the DDA board looked at. And then based on all of our communications, John and I have worked on this, and I really appreciate John putting this together in such a concise and clear way. Because really, a lot of what this is, is codifying what we do and what we know we do, but now to make sure that we have processes. And all of this is predicated on that work plan. You know, we have a plan of development that we're updating through the sub-area process, and there's a work plan in there for 18 months, and we want to make that, we want to streamline the process. So that's where the MOU comes into play because we're going to have hashed out how we do things so that we're just talking about priorities. Where do we all think that we need to be investing our time and money in this 18-month work plan? Because there's a lot of work in there, and some of it might not happen immediately, but I think that that's really what the DDA board wants to hear from you all is, what are you the most excited about going after first, you know? And what are those priorities for 2026? Because we should be starting our budget process now with you. And so that is the hope with having that annual check-in with the strategic, with the plan of development that there, we're getting to, okay, these are the priorities, this is how we're going to do it. So then the budget conversations just kind of flow from there. And then we have better budget numbers because I've had time to really go out and scope those things, meet with different board members. You know, we can have a tighter conversation so that in August and September, it's not, well, why are we doing this and why is it that? It's, we already know why, how we got here, and then this is how we're going to respond to that. So that's really all I kind of wanted to add to it is just, these are best practices. These are things that like I generally agree with and John, and, you know, ways to work together. And I really appreciate working with John and look forward to being able to implement all the work that everybody's been doing for the past year. Because I do feel like all the right people are in the right places, and now it's time to do something with this. So that's all I'll say. Thank you.
Okay, Mayor Billy had to step out for just a moment. So from the board, any clarifying questions?
So there is, the draft of the working agreement is the next step. We don't have a draft yet.
Yeah, and then also just putting in the, the extra content into the bylaws, we still need to actually draft that language.
Right, have the hooks in the bylaws, but then the meat of it, we'll be working on that. Okay.
Clarifying question. So is the plan of development, is that separate from the MOU? Is it a component of the MOU? What's?
It's really the, it's the, it's basically a strategic plan of the DDA.
Yes.
And so it would be probably, we don't need the MOU to be done to do that. So I think we probably want to start that plan of development as soon as possible because it's going to have budgetary implications. So we might want them to be developed in tandem. But I believe the MOU won't take long to develop. It's really like, like, timesheets are due this day, and this is the process we use for bank reconciliations and like just nerdy, you know, technical stuff for how we are going to work together.
Yeah. I sort of have just a general question to pop over to the, you know, to the board and Tanya. If it's ever a thing, and I, and I'm thinking about this across all of our boards, not just the NDDA, but if there's some sort of project evaluation criteria, if that's a thing, should it be a thing? I don't know.
We've, we've had attempts at that in different ways in the past, from the, you know, the NPP. We had sustainability checklists at one point that went to all the boards for projects. So there's been various attempts of that that obviously have not quite.
Stuck.
Stunk.
Okay.
If you guys were, you have to approve the plan of development, and that's why I'm suggesting the annual review because we know that over 10 years or whatever, like, maybe that changes. And I think our current plan of development is rather old. It's, it's getting up there.
Well, when you approve the sub-area plan, that becomes a plan of development.
So that's kind of like, it's like, so the consensus comes from that, and then approve the, this review process I'm suggesting, we would look at those projects because it could be that things, that priorities change or things bump up and down. So if we do that annual review before we start the, the next year's budget process, then we would have like a clear idea of what the priorities for that year are. And as we go, some of this stuff may logically follow because if we start working on infrastructure, it may be something like, you know, like, there may be a certain order of operation that we have to go through for that. But I think that ultimately, that process, what you're talking about, should be part of this plan of development approval thing. And really, that's part of, like you said, it's part of the sub-area plan essentially, so. And that's coming to Planning Commission. Planning Commission needs to go through it. We need to approve it, and then we need to make sure that we're all aligned as that is the plan of development.
Mm-hmm. That was the intent of going through that process altogether so that it could just become, the sub-area plan would just become our work, our plan of development, and then that 18-month work plan would be the DDA's. And so the messaging through this year, even though we don't have that totally finalized yet, is that's where their heads need to be in committees. Like, if it doesn't tie to this plan, it's not really where the energy is going. So that's really how they've been vetting themselves. Because it does change like public arts course of work. They're not doing, they're not looking at doing murals. They're looking at the plaques that are lined up in the 18-month work plan. So tho, those are the kinds of things that they're already trying to implement. And why you haven't seen a lot of action yet because we want to make sure that everything aligns with what we say we're going to do.
Mm-hmm. Well, yeah, I mean, even to that, like, whether that's the, the arts or, you know, some of the other things that were in your budget, like the website, like, does, does the website still become a priority? Right? If we're really, if we're focusing 100% on that sub-area plan, where do some of those line items that have come to us before fall off?
So website is a priority, and we are going to move forward with, at the last meeting, they discussed moving forward with town's provider so that it's something that gets taken care of, but we do it efficiently for not the $20,000 that was budgeted. You know, and so it'll be, it, so yes, it's still a priority because we really want the business directory. We want some of that functionality. We want it cleaned up. But we also want it to be integrated with town and have it stop being the time suck. So this is a way that we thought was really an efficient way to work together as we are and, and then to get that done too, within a reasonable budget.
Mm-hmm.
And one note with the sub-area plan, we do need to pull out, we need to make like an action plan out of it. It has like several recommendations. So there's, so it would be needing to be a prioritization and like looking at that. And I think that's really where the, the rubber meets the road here between the board.
Board.
And just to make sure you have consensus about the order of operations there.
Right, because I think like if there was disagreement on the priority, my understanding is that it would be the BOT that would eventually, that could essentially come down and say, actually, this is going to be the priority.
Yeah, you guys have the final approval.
Right. And so, yeah.
Well, that's where, in that sub-area plan, there's an 18-month work plan, and that's what they're hoping in the work session, we start to talk about.
Yeah, sure.
And so that's where the priorities come in, and that you're giving that direction of the types of things. And I truly do think we're, we're pretty aligned. It really is just, what do we want to go after first? And what are the things that we're working, because there's a lot of things lined up in there that our staff, I see more at an admin-staff work level for us to start getting information on to come to you. So the way it is, how do you want to balance, you know, those infrastructure projects that we know we can start getting on now and then the other stuff that we need to kind of ramp up for in getting that feedback about where everybody is with that work?
Also regarding an MOU, I guess a question back to the board here is, do we have, is there any preferences or needs for any type of specific data or reports on project status or anything like that?
Top of my head, I can't think of like specific things, but I think the part of that MO, the.
The MOU.
The MOU, yeah. Would be that sort of, that step of, you know, the, laying out the boards over, this board's oversight role. You know, both in terms of the 18-month plan and things like that, but in terms of when priorities do change over the course of a project. I mean, we've got projects that have been going for long past an 18-month plan, and perhaps those are no longer the direction we need to go in. So what is that, how does that interface between the Board of Trustees and the DDA work in those cases? But I think those are details for the MOU.
And, you know, one question that would be interesting is, when, when does a project get sunset? And are we aware of it?
Okay.
And do we have, yes, insight or comment?
Two things. One is, if we have that project management meeting structure that I was talking about, we can do it based on the complexity of the project. So there's some projects that are going to happen, like where we need to just say, what are you doing? Here's the permits. Or there might be projects, and this is something that needs to be in the MOU as well, like who's going to manage projects that happen? Some of them, the town is going to have to have a management role, but some were not. And so that's like a capacity thing for staff on our side that we just need to figure out in that MOU. But I think through that project management lens, we can create those KPIs or whatever data points need to happen for that specific project. And then that's why I think like an annual or like bi-annual or whatever you decide review of the plan of development is so critical because it would give you an ability to look through that plan and say, this is like, for whatever reason, this is no longer happening, or this is more important. And then we could adjust that in the budget process so that it could inform what they're doing. And then you just have that consensus as projects happen. Because I think it's really the easiest way to get consensus that the projects are the right projects because the resolution piece is going to become, it, it's just not practical unless it's on town right-of-way. And I think that's the other thing. If it is on town right-of-way or town property, we'd still want that resolution to come to you because that's your, your approval of like, hey, this is an okay thing to do to the town. But there may be something like, like, maybe there's a facade improvement program in the future that's happening on private property, and there's really no trigger for the town to say.
We need to have a resolution for that. Right, yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay. And as far as reporting, I did just want to say, I want to come monthly and just sit with you like this. And I'm happy to give a verbal in-person and writing report, but whatever connection feels the best because I see us with, there's a lot of work to do, and we do need to be very in step. And that's where the MOU really does allow us to get into those details and lay out all of the things that you're talking about so that then it, it lives beyond all of us, like you all have been working on. And it helps the next people that need to pick it up, you know, see where we are and see how we said we were going to do things and how we were going to work together. And, and that's where, you know, there has been so many things that are confusing, and you kind of alluded to this in the past, and that's where, put our lawyers on it, we tell them all the things, and then the lawyers do their thing and, and tell us where we all can land and where we can be. And I've already started talking to our attorney about this because he was part of the one that brought this up in light of our work plan and seeing the path forward. He's like, you know, these, a lot of these details that you want need to be in your MOU. And then we'll have a policies and procedures that will reflect that. But it's really just part about putting more structure to the DDA now that we are going after these more ambitious projects. There's more investment on everybody. So it's just upping everybody's game a little bit more.
Okay. Is it worth also documenting in the MOU if, if there needs to be a breakdown on budgetary things? Like, at what point, does, you know, does NDDA cover all costs for things? Or, or if it's on like town-owned, you know, parcels, are you looking for any type of cost share? And is that something that would need to be articulated in an MOU?
I thought about that too, because there's also the potential we could use DDA funds for grant match, which would really help us. And I think like, that project management structure is really the piece that we need for that unless we want to like, I, I don't know how we would.
Yeah, and I'm mostly just asking the que, it's like, oh, that could come up. Oh, wouldn't it be great if that was already sort of articulated in a formal, you know, MOU?
And that's what this is for. Just throw it all at us, and then we'll go and see what we can hash out.
Yeah, so that would just be one. Um, let me look at my notes. And I believe there was a, a line that if for some reason there's not the Executive Director, the Chair takes on budgeting. Is that correct? I'm sorry.
Town submits the budget.
So let's say in, in the event that, like, something, you decide to step down or something like that.
Gotcha.
Who, who's going to take on the responsibilities of the Executive Director in the interim?
I think the way it's designed it, like, you're correct. It's supposed to be the Chair.
It's supposed to be the Chair.
But they would still work with, with town staff, which I think would be, right now it'd be me and Rita, and we could help kind of facilitate from the staff piece.
Yeah, I was trying to find the spot where it said that. I just wanted to make sure it was covered.
That's one of the things the MOUs, that we're really looking for in the MOU is like some structure around like, the, the finance reporting is our biggest pain point, I think.
Yeah.
Because it's just two different organization finances. And so what it is, is figuring out a way for, for you to work with Rita effectively so that you guys all have the information you need and everything is happening when it needs to happen. That's one of the big processes in the MOU.
Okay, yeah. And it does say, "In the absence or disability of a hired director, the Board Chair shall assume all director duties and responsibilities unless directed otherwise by board vote."
One note is that that is in the bylaws from 2018, which were worked on but not officially approved.
Approved, right.
So this is something we want to make sure we roll in because they're not currently in it.
And does it articulate, like, is it just a majority board vote? Or are there any special stipulations around that? Like, all of that's documented somewhere, I'm guessing.
I don't think it gets into that level of detail.
I would also suggest a little bit of clarification as to which board we're discussing in that point. Is it on the vote of the Board of, the DDA Board or on the BOT? Whose board gets to decide that the director, you know, the Chair is the new director?
And that is not actually clarified. That is not in that line.
One thing that's unique about the, we can clarify that, but one thing that's unique about the DDA to remember is it is a quasi-government. So it's not technically an advisory body. There's just a relationship between the Board of Trustees and the DDA. And you have some specific powers related to like adding and removing members, you know, dissolving the board if that was a choice you wanted to make, approving the budget, the audit, and the plan of development. Those are really the big statutory powers that you have. And so I think, it's weird because it's not like Planning Commission where there's, like, it's a, it's under you board. It's kind of like adjacent with ties.
Well, and so by reading that, it seemed like it was referring to the NDDA. But like, that's the thing that needs clarification.
Yes, yeah, I think that is what it, we can look at that, that note. Thank you.
I ought to check, you know, so to give full voting rights to the BOT liaison, knowing that we have various boards that sort of enact that stipulation, is there any concern if there is inconsistency across different boards on that?
The DDA had a long conversation for them about that, about that specific issue. And the thing I think that's really important to remember is, is that your boards have different functions.
Yeah.
BZA, Planning Commission, quasi-judicial decision-making. That means that it could be something comes back to you. There could be a conflict there just depending on, on the decision being made. Not every decision Planning Commission makes is quasi-judicial. There are administrative decisions, and there's also just kind of, yeah, just legislative decisions as well.
Or administrative, yeah.
Yeah, and those are different. But in this case, the, the reason that I think is different is because the BOT, the way that the BOT has a voice specifically on what the DDA is doing is to have that vote. And that's how you have agency on that board. In the old, in the old way, there was a time when it was supposed to have like three board members to give you more voting power. But I think that's not really what's desired. I think it's more about like having a representative there. And so it's really a decision for you. And in terms of consistency, when you have like, like for SAB, for instance, a decision they're making is never, is always going to be something that the board either needs to act on or is something just so administrative that it doesn't, it doesn't really rise to that same level of concern as like a Planning Commission decision, although it's still a very important decision. So I think that there's not really an inconsistency, like, in having the voting members of each board vote based on the role that they have with that board. But one of the things I think we should do with our strategic plan is really interrogate that question and be a little bit more clear about how that works for each board. Just so that the liaison member to that board has like a kind of a clear role there. And I think it would help us just to, to make sure that everybody's working as effectively as possible.
Those are all my questions.
Thanks, Cole. Well, those are the clarifying questions we have. Tanya, you have clarifying questions or comments?
Uh, no. No, I mean, I, I think it's all pretty clear.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I initially was the one that's just kind of, specifically on the voting was like, you know, why, I don't understand why liaison would vote on a budget that they later vote on. And then same thing with appointments. But I did kind of like, you know, talking to John and talking to Kate and then listening to the meeting, you know, last Wednesday, um, listening and also talking, you know, listening to Jennifer. It does make sense that really, it, it's an elected official that has a vote on the board. And it makes sense that the community would want that, you know, and it kind of gets to have that really to some degree, you know, that the elected official gets a vote. Say again?
It's in the state statute for the NDDA.
Yeah, but it also says that we can decide. And ultimately, I'm saying I'm agreeing with it because I felt like that was good logic. Also, you know, arguably, if there was a rogue DDA, we'd have a little bit of a check in the balance with a BOT member that could vote, you know. And so to me, it made more sense. And I guess even if it's budget or supplemental budget or appointments, you know, it's still, you know, the final decision does sit with the BOT anyways, which are all elected officials. So, so ultimately, I was, it made sense to me. It seemed like good logic. like, I'm just around the auditing and the financial accounting, like, that maybe the, you know, that Rita's getting paid for her work for the DDA by the DDA, and that's, you know, you know, whether, you know, I guess, the details of that you all would work out, but whether that's compensating the town for that part of her salary, or however you do that. But if Rita's doing that work for the DDA, I feel like Rita or the town need to be paid for that.
Yeah, allocate costs for time.
Yeah.
Are, are we doing that now? It's not in our budget.
No, I don't think it is being done right now, that's why.
Yeah, no, I think we may need a supplemental budget to do that.
Yeah, and that would be articulated in the MOU.
I just, but I mean, for now, like, currently. That's not fair.
Does Rita document her hours separately when she does it for the NDDA?
Yeah, she has, we probably can tighten it up so it's very, so it's transparent for everybody.
Yeah, very specific, yeah.
We do quarterly billing with town for different joint projects that it makes the most sense to do that way, so that it could be something that just gets included there. That's not, I don't think, an unreasonable ask at all. And we're used to seeing those breakouts, so.
Cool. Thanks. This is great. I definitely think the two-pronged approach, you know, that your lawyer brought up, this MOU, you know, being, instead of just bylaws, is what we were all thinking before, that, that, you know, bylaws take care of certain things, and the MOU takes care of others, and then, you know, obviously, they work together. And then, and then, yeah, the work session we're going to have is really kind of on the plan of development, on the sub-area plan, and then we'll talk about the MOU probably first, and then plan of development. That's likely happened in April, is what we're thinking. Great. Any other, I don't think we've had public comment yet, so any other comments before we go to public comment? There's no one in the room. If anyone online has a public comment, now is your time. So we'll bring it back, and just get clear on what guidance, specifically, what would you like from us? There we go, request for direction. Does the board approve the NDA's proposed bylaws updated as presented? Do we have a nod? Or actually, let's discuss, let's discuss if people have more. On page, basically on page 90 of the packet, request for direction towards the bottom. There's a one, two, and three, and two has some subbullets.
Yes, so I don't have any issue with what was already recommended in the board packet, and then the additional questions and things that we asked, just to make sure that they get addressed in the MOU or the bylaws.
These bylaws are going to go to the NDDA and then return to us for final approval.
Yes.
Yeah. Do you, actually, do you have, have we, have we answered these questions already, or do you feel like you need more clarity on the request for direction?
I feel comfortable. I think we're going to add clarity about the boards, like, what board is what. We're going to add in the language. I think you guys are comfortable with the things I suggested in my staff report. I think, for the most part, the criteria question, are you, my, my question, in terms of evaluating projects, I could build criteria into the annual review for the DD, for the work plan, if we want to do that, or biannual, or however you want to do that. Or potentially, I could do it into the project part, but I want to make sure I'm addressing that criteria concern.
I don't think I have necessarily a preference for where it goes, just as long as it's sort of captured. Yeah, so like, evaluation, if there was data sharing or anything that needed to be happening on a per-project basis, like you had talked about. And if there needs to be a breakdown or an understanding between what gets NDDA funds versus town funds, if there's, if there's anything around that.
Would you like me to add specific language about the comp plan and the strategic plan as criteria setters? Because really, the strategic plan is probably what we're going to be developing, our, your thoughts off of, I would imagine, but-
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, and then the other thing, I think, I think that covers everything except for the, like, the minor language clarifications, to make sure that your oversight is clear and strong.
Mm-hmm, yep. Okay.
Kate, you have everything you need?
Yes, thank you.
Great. Well, thank you, everyone. Appreciate moving through that. And with that, I think we are at the end of our discussion items. I don't, I can't see everyone up there, but, does anyone have a public comment on non-gen item? I know I said we wouldn't do it again, but just want to make sure someone jumped on. Seeing none. Any other business? Yep, go ahead, John.
I just want to take a moment, I didn't say this in my staff report, but Peter is going to be leaving the town on April 4th, and he has been here for a long time. He's one of the most Netherlands people I know who cares about this place more than about anybody I know. And so I just wanted to give him a happy send-off. We also learned today that Karina is getting a new job as well, and it's very exciting for her. She's been trained very well by Miranda and Macy on how to be a clerk, and she's getting an opportunity to take a higher-level role in Broomefield. And they're both people that really mean a lot to our team, so I just want to take a moment here in this meeting to thank them both for what they've done for Netherlands, and just wish them the best as they move on into their new ventures.
Very cool.
Yeah, thanks, John. And is Gwen's Karina's last day?
March.
Ah, so she'll be done before our next meeting. Well, tell her we're happy for her for the new opportunity, and bum, she's leaving. Happy for the new opportunity. And then, is there anything we can do for Peter, like, since he will be here still at the next meeting? Is there something you'd like to do?
Yeah, we were the, we have our town talks that we always have, and we're trying to coordinate one more before he leaves, so that we can have a, kind of a reception for him, if people would like to come. And that'll be something that we're going to try to get information out in the very immediate future. So I'd love to have you here if you can. And then he can, maybe he can be here for our last meeting, or we could, we could do something nice for both of them.
Yeah, for both of them. Well, tell them both, congratulations, and thanks for bringing that up. Any other business?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Good business.
Mayor Billy?
Yes.
Trustee Corvalon? Trustee Ty?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Sterling?
Yes.
And trustee Larson?
No!
You are so contrarian. Thank you. Have a nice night spending it here alone.
Meeting adjourned at 9:38 PM.
Thanks, everybody.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, Jennifer.
Thanks, Jennifer.